Good evening. I call to order the regular meeting of the Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, March 8th, 2023. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner LaVoy.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yep.
Commissioner Scales. Commissioner Barry.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Van Buren is here, and Chairman Carmichael.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Would anyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And while everybody's standing, anyone who testifies before the commission has to be sworn in. Please raise your right hand and swear that any and all testimony you provide to the commission will be the whole truth.
I do.
Thank you. Two reminders. First, please silence all your electronic devices. And secondly, that anyone who testifies has to sign in with their name and point of contact. We have an extra sign up, signing out in the hallway if anyone needs that. The next item is approval of the minutes of the January 11th, 2023 regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, Barry. Second, Barry.
And Harold?
Yes.
Okay.
Have motion, second discussion on the minutes. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Mistress Barry?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner LaVoy?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. And next item is the open forum. What the Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission serves as the public hearing arm for the village. And so if there's anyone here who would like to speak to the commission on any issue other than anything that's on our agenda tonight, now's your chance. Seeing no one, we'll move on. I'll just review the public hearing procedures. First, the applicant will come forward, present his or her petition, and then Scott Williams is our, staff is our village planner. He'll come next and give us background and comments on the petition. And following that, then it's the public's turn. Anyone who comes forward and to address the commission and ask questions, make comments about the petition, it's their turn. And then finally, then the commissioners will discuss, make their comments, and hopefully we get to a vote on each item. And just a reminder that this is a recommending body only, that our recommendation goes to the village board, and they're the people who are to finally say so. And a new business first. PZC 002, 2023 requests from Full Circle Partners Limited Liability Corporation, also known as Neat Kitchen &amp; Bar, and Mike Higgins, the owner, regarding the property located at 246 North Cass Avenue in Westmont for the following. A zoning ordinance variance request to allow a covered patio with a required supplemental setback line to Cass Avenue and within a required front yard setback in the B1 Limited District, Business District. B preliminary plat of subdivision to consolidate four lots into one lot. And C, a site and landscaping plan approval. Who is here tonight to represent Neat? Good evening, sir. Hi. Yeah, please.
For those who don't know me, my name's Matt. One of the owners of Neat Kitchen &amp; Bar. We opened Neat from the, or took over Neat from the previous owners back in 2018. Had a pretty good run at it until COVID hit, and luckily, we were fortunate enough to have a patio. So we moved everything from the inside of the restaurant to the outside of the restaurant and continued to operate. We had a lot of success with the outdoor dining when that was allowed for the two years during COVID and then the year after COVID. And then when the third year after, the second year after COVID, when outdoor dining was not allowed, we decided that we wanted to have an outdoor space for people to dine because it was so popular and people enjoyed it and people were asking about it. And there aren't currently that many outdoor dining areas here in Westmont. So we've been working with an architect and design company, and we have contractors ready and willing to do this for us. So what we're asking is permission to add this 900 square foot outdoor patio, beer garden, outdoor dining area off of the, right off of the building that currently exists. In doing that, we would redo the face of the building as well. Right now, we do have some outdoor dining in the front of the building, but it's weathered. It needs to be improved. And with the improvements that are being done at the side of the tracks and also just across the street at Mrs. Tees, we feel that this would be a great addition to the, you know, to the streetscape of Cass. So we're asking for, like I said, permission for the outdoor patio, the consolidation of the four lots because the property does sit on four lots right now. I'm not sure if that's something that hasn't been filed, but I believe we've already got that in motion. And the landscape and site plan to be approved, and then the variances to be approved. I know that the variance is five feet, the setback is five feet, but what we're proposing to add on to the, to the building, just doesn't make sense to go five feet to the west of that. We just want to continue with the face of the building that we have right now. And then as far as the landscape plan, we do have in this rendering that you see there, some additional landscape and things to bring up, bring the parking lot and also the sidewalk up to or close to code right now with what is being asked of us. That's really the nuts and bolts of what I'm asking for. I guess I'll throw it out to you now.
Thank you, Chair. So this property, Neat Kitchen, is located at 246 North Cass. It's south of Naperville Road and north of Norfolk. There's an alleyway behind it as well. Around is a mix of uses in the B1 district, and then to the rear, there is residential in the R3 district. Really, the petitioner is asking for three different requests. I'm going to go a little bit out of order, so I hope that you can follow me. The first request is the preliminary plat of subdivision to consolidate the four lots, as he mentioned. As you know, when people come to the commission, we try to clean up the properties to make sure they're ready for development. In this case, much of the downtown has many underlying lots for multiple businesses. So this is sort of a cleanup of that. And the request for the patio in particular invokes a site and landscaping plan. That is why they're going through the site and landscaping process. So the petitioner is proposing the 900 square foot covered patio addition to the existing restaurant space. The addition would be adjacent to Cass Avenue, the Cass Avenue sidewalk. It's bordered by three wide areas of landscaping and three foot wide sidewalk to the parking lot. The parking lot would be reconfigured and the front facade of the building would be updated, as he mentioned. Typically, all commercial buildings are required to have the six foot width of foundation landscaping around the building, or just on the addition in this case. No landscaping is being proposed on Cass Avenue as they have a reduced, they're asking for a reduced setback on Cass Avenue. But the requirement is met on the western edge of the addition. And then to the south, where the patio is being placed, the adjacent, adjacent to the drive aisles, a three foot wide landscape area has been proposed. It is substandard. A six foot wide area should have been accommodated, could have been accommodated, but the staff requested that it wasn't to allow for easy access to the building. One thing I did want to note was, as you know, in 2020, we removed some of the parking standards in the downtown. So I just want to touch on that really quick. In this case, for the site plan, the current configuration of the parking lot has a two-way drive aisle and 39 perpendicular spaces. Both of the spaces in the drive aisles are substandard currently. The patio addition and landscaping adjacent to the sidewalk will occupy several of the existing spaces that were there, and an attempt to remedy a substandard 18-foot aisle width when usually 24 feet is required. The parking lot is going to be reconfigured to angled parking in a one-way towards the So the angled parking is, the requirement's 18-foot depth. This proposal meets the requirement for the depth, but the space widths are still substandard at nine feet rather than the 10 we usually ask for. They are going to be asking for a waiver at the village board for a substandard width, which our village engineer has supported. So lastly, I just want to talk about the setback variances. There are technically two setbacks on Cass. One from the midpoint, we require a 50-foot setback to the property, to the building. And then there's also the five-foot setback, as he mentioned. So there's, the distance from the center line of Cass is 33 feet for this patio, which would require any building setback to be 17 feet from the property line. And then there's also the requirement of the five-foot step back. Obviously, this building and patio is going to be sitting at zero as it stands currently. And then I am open to questions from the commission.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone for the public who would like to address this issue? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the commissioners. Commissioner LaVoy, would you like to start?
Sure. Thank you, Matt, for your presentation. I really enjoy the restaurant there. I just have a few questions, of course, are technical in nature just because of who I am, but anyway. On the existing plan, where the new patio was going to go, there's two handicap parking spaces. On the new plan, there's only one. Is the new plan going to be compliant with ADA requirements?
This is Lance. Lance is our architect. You can answer, speak to that.
Lance Chelsea, 820 architects. And yes, one space is required. There's only a total of, I think it was 18 spaces now? Is that right? 18 spaces plus the handicap, so it does meet.
So one space meets, but we had two to begin with.
We had two.
When I looked at it, I said, why we're taking away two and putting back one? So that's why I asked the question. Secondly, the three-foot walk, is that going to be ADA compliant?
Yes, it is. It's ADA compliant, and I have a ramp.
I see that.
Yeah, right at the stripe.
Okay. And I notice, you know, driving by there every day, that one of the issues that I have, even with Mr. Tees, is the site lighting. Your site lighting, I think you rely on wall packs for that. I don't think there's a light pole on the other side. Is that going to meet village requirements?
I don't know the answer to that. It wasn't brought up in our staff meetings that we had.
So the, I'll just step in really quick. The lighting standards, as you know, is zero feet at the lot lines for every property. In this case, it would probably be looked at during permitting with our engineer and then our permitting staff, once they submit.
I understand zero at the lot line, but there is a minimum requirement for the parking spaces too. So typically, there would be lighting on the other side to, because I know pulling in there at night.
Got it.
Walking in the dark, you know, in a parking lot like that could be of concern to the owner. I'm sure you can address it in permitting. And then looking at, it's a nice add, I think, I mean, conceptually, it's great. Along the front of the building, there's existing planters. Are they going to go away entirely?
On the front of the building?
The front of the building.
Yeah, right now, we only, there's just a wooden.
Like a wooden thing there?
It's just a wooden wall.
Like a buffer, yeah.
That is going to go away, and it's going to be replaced with, it's kind of tough to see.
Yeah, tables out there.
Yeah, tables, but there's also a railing there.
An iron railing. An iron railing to provide some sort of.
Okay, so there will be an iron rail?
Yes.
I'm supportive of the requests, and I just wanted to clarify those couple of things that I see that's unrelated to the request itself, but it's something on the site plan I thought I'd go on the record, just to ask. Last thing would be that according to the ADA space, that space has to be the closest to the entry.
Right.
And I think that entry on the side might not be the main entry. And if that, that could have to shift to the other side and might even eliminate your walk entirely there, the necessity for the walk.
Yeah, the reason, the reason it's flipped on the other side is for safety reasons, so they're not crossing the drive aisle. That's why it's on that side.
Okay.
So I mean, if it, maybe you'd like to see it, you know, on the other side, just from a safety issue. You know, I've been in other municipalities where they don't want people, you know, kind of walking down.
Yeah, I was looking at it totally from.
Right.
An ADA perspective, that the space has to be the closest to the entry. And I think that space across is closer than where you have it. And if you put it there, you may be able to add, eliminate that walk and add that buffer back to the six feet. Just a question. Now, that's not something that I, I'll let staff deal with that, but that has nothing to do with your request, but I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Yeah, I'll also add that our engineer and then obviously our permitting, we can change those parking spaces at that time because it won't change the amount of parking spaces.
Yeah, maybe you may even say, Matt, plenty to do that because you wouldn't have to build the walk. You'd have landscaping in there, and you could just put the parking space on the other corner.
That's three feet of length. Three feet of length. Right. That's three seconds.
I have no further questions.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Peterson?
Just to clarify, though, for the accessible route from that space across, right? I mean, basically, your accessible routes across the drive line, right?
Could be. I would say that is something probably to address with during the permitting process for ADA compliance. That's something that we do look at.
Yeah. Commissioner Peterson?
On the part where the new patio is going to be and then into the parking lot, could you explain again what kind of barrier is going to be there? Is there going to be a little fence?
So there is a barrier curb, barrier curb, six-inch barrier curb, and then the landscape buffer, three foot of landscape buffer, and then a three-foot sidewalk, okay? And then the iron fence around it.
What kind of fence?
Iron.
Okay.
Iron.
Okay. And I know, and John, maybe you can help me on this. I know years ago, when you had outside alcohol sales, you used to have certain types of fences you had to have, but I'm assuming that's.
That's not a zoning regulation. That's something that the liquor commissioner addresses in the liquor license and requires any outdoor seating area where liquor is served to be completely fenced and that no alcohol can leave the property. And some exceptions are sometimes given for Taste of Westmont or other downtown events, but that's not a zoning issue.
Okay, that's, um, I think that's all I had. I like it. I, sometimes it's a little noisy in there, you know, when you're going for hamburgers. So it'll be nice, maybe sitting outside to get away from some of that noise. And I think what you're doing to the front and the side, I think it'll look real nice. And I'm assuming, and it's not on our stuff too, but there'll be signage for the one-way only.
I would assume that would be the case for the, I know they showed it on the painting on the ground.
Right, you're on it. Yeah. Well, you guys have to do that, so just stencil the lot with the arrows.
And that's all I have. I think it's going to look really nice. It's going to add, I think it's going to add to that area down there, so very nice.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
My only question was the same as hers, what kind of barrier between the parking lot and the patio, the new entrance? And that's fine, but what kind of, you said there's landscaping barrier also. What's that made up of?
So I have boxwoods, oxwoods by more vertical. I forgot what I, so what did I put in here? Arbivitas. So I got arbor vida, then low plantings, boxwoods, and then arbor vida by the entry to kind of mark the entry into that, and then back down to low boxwoods. And then in the corner over there along the building, there's hydrangeas. So it's got a variety of plantings and colors and.
All sturdy.
Right. Actually, these were recommendations by your landscape architect.
Not enough to stop a car, though.
Okay. I think it looks beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Van Buren?
A map for you that you've been able to weather the COVID, where a lot of people didn't, and also that you are willing to further enhance your operation, and you're a real asset to the community, and you'll continue to be and appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Barry?
I would just piggyback those sentiments. Full disclosure, I'm a neighbor to Matt, and we've become friends in that time. I think I eat there, I would say now every week, but probably already ate 10 days, maybe, is that where we're at? So, and it got me through COVID with Thanksgiving and Christmas meals and all kinds of different things. So I'm excited to see this, and there's been times lately where it's so full, I can't even get a seat in there. So I'm hoping that this helps to alleviate some of that. And we know your participation in the Taste of Westmont and all the other events. So I think this follows what we see other communities doing, Downers Grove and so forth, where really downtown friendly and, you know, our next petitioner, I think we're going to see more of that. And I really like it a lot. So good luck with the whole project.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess all my questions were answered. Would this be, do you have heaters out there used in cold weather as well?
So as, you can't see on the rendering right now, but there would be heaters out there, and then there would be walls, you know, put up in, you know, November through, through April or whatever.
Like plexiglass or?
In order to turn into a three season, or a four season, or a three and a half season room. I know that it does get cold out here in the winter, and it takes a lot to heat the outdoor, you know, patios. But the way that we have the doors that are leading into, into the restaurant set up, this could essentially be a new venue for, you know, for private events, larger private events and things like that. So we're not just trying to use it, you know, May through, through October, but if we can get 10 months out of it, then we'll pay for it that much quicker.
Yeah. All right, well, that's all I have, and I'm certainly supportive. It looks like a really good idea to me. Is there any further discussion, board members? Then under PZC 002, 2023, the chair would support, or would ask for a motion to approve A zoning ordinance variance request to allow a covered patio within a required supplemental setback line to Cass Avenue and within a required front yard setback in the B1 Limited Business District. One more?
Second.
Okay, have motion and second discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Barry?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner LaVoy?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. B preliminary plat of subdivision to consolidate four lots into one lot. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Barry.
Second, Thomas.
A motion to approve, Barry, second. It is Thomas. Discussion, seeing none, roll call.
Commissioner Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner LaVoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. And finally, a site and landscaping plan approval. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, Barry.
Second, Van Buren?
Motion and second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner LaVoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Barry?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. Well, there you have it, gentlemen. You have our approval that will go to the village board, and staff will contact you when you'll be scheduled, and good luck with the project.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Once approved, what's on your, what's your timeline for this, right away?
Quickly as possible, yeah. We'd like to have this often and then going by Taste of Westmont.
Thank you.
Next item, PZC 004, 2023, request from John Burns Construction Company and the, it was the petitioner, and 999 Oakmont Valley Equity Group, LLC, the owner, regarding the property located at 999 Oakmont Plaza Drive in Westmont for the following. Zoning code variance request to alter the orientation of wall signs. Good evening.
Hello, I'm Jim Gilmore with Design Group Signage Corp., and I am the sign, design, manufacture, and installer for John Burns Construction.
I'm Pat Esposito, John Burns Construction.
And we have filed a variance to relocate the sign for John Burns Corporate to the south side and basically giving up the rights to the other location. And it's pretty straightforward as far as the colors, white, red returns. It'll be on a timing system, and I think it looks very attractive on the building, and I think it will enhance, actually, in general, and it'll be very professionally done.
Timing system on the lighting?
Was that?
Could you?
Well, we're not certain if they're going to put it on a, like, dimmer, but I'm going to suggest time clock.
Okay. Staff?
Thank you, Chair. So this property is located at 999 Oakmont Plaza Drive. It's on the east side of Pasquenelli, between Pasquenelli and Kingery Highway or 83. It's located in one of Westmont's office, office areas. The petitioner is requesting or proposing to alter the orientation of a permitted wall sign from the elevation facing Pasquenelli to the south side for visibility to 83. To facilitate the request, the owner, as he mentioned, is transferring the allotted signage rights from the west elevation to the south, so you no longer be allowed to have any signage on the west end. So in our zoning code, the wall identification sign is permitted on a frontage for each lot, and the code further indicates, identifies wall signage allowances for internal parking lots. So if you look on the staff report, there is a little table that dictates what they're permitted and what they're not permitted. So the code also has set forth permitted signage for the total surface area, which is 2.0 square feet per lineal foot of the building facade. The current existing signage on the property is the K5 sign facing 83, and then there's also a multi-tenant monument sign on Pasquenelli. The, the request would not, the proposed 158 square foot wall sign would increase the gross surface area of signage on the property to 311 square feet, which is still less than what they're permitted there. I won't go through all the, the standards for variation. If you have questions on that, I'd be happy to answer. But reiterate, the petitioner is seeking a variation to alter the orientation, so they're not increasing signage, but they're using, utilizing the permitted maximum gross surface area of the west elevation to the. permitted maximum gross surface area of the west elevation to the south elevation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the commission on this? Seeing no one, let's go to the commissioners. Commissioner Peterson, would you start?
I actually have nothing to say. I mean, it's pretty, pretty cut and dry, so, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
So, you take where the sign is presently for, for the tenant, a tenant, moving it to the other side for yours, and that doesn't change the ground sign at all?
No, the ground sign is still permitted there. I will say that there's no existing signage on the west side facing Pasquenelli. Currently, there's allotted signage there that they're moving the rights away.
It's a good-looking building, and the sign's going to fit right in, so I have no problem at all with it.
We're excited to be here.
Yeah.
We moved from Orland Park. We're the largest tenant now in the building, occupying 28,000 square feet. Just a $5 million buildout, and we just moved in last week. We're excited to be here.
That's all I got. Mr. Van Buren?
No, I say welcome. Glad to have you, and I have no problem with your request.
Mr. Berry?
Again, straightforward and welcome to Westmont.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Glad to have you and supportive of the request.
Yeah, I think it makes all the sense in the world to put this on the south side rather than the west or the north.
Well, it would add, if we were to put it over right next to K5, it's going to look really crowded.
It'll confuse people.
Yeah.
And...
And then Robert Krueg wasn't excited when I told him he had to take yours down.
Yeah, we want our side, take yours down.
Of course. Well, I think we're all supportive here. Chair would entertain a motion to approve PZC 004-2023 zoning code variance request to alter the, alter this orientation of wall signs. Do I have a motion?
So move, Thomas. Go ahead.
Motion, Thomas?
Well, since Thomas, second, Van Buren.
Van Buren. Discussion, seeing none. Roll call, please.
See, Thomas, let me get that motion. Okay, Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes.
There you have it, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We'll have our recommendation to the village board, and welcome to Westmont.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We'll contact you probably tomorrow.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks.
You have a good evening.
Next agenda item is PZC 007-2023, request by Ahmed Dina for the named Z Smoke Shop as a petitioner, and Trossi Boulis Kostopoulos, the owner, regarding the property at 319 West 63rd Street in Westmont for the following, a special use permit request for a tobacco and vape retail store in the B2 General Business District. Good evening.
Good evening. My name Ahmed Dina, and I'm asking for a special use to open a smoke shop. It's a first time business for me. A store that's be selling vape and cigarette.
Sir, could you speak, speak a little louder?
Yeah.
My ears are...
It's going to be a smoke shop store. The name of the store is going to be Z Smoke. And the store, it will be selling cigarette, vape, vape accessories, hookah, and hookah accessories. Operating, it will be from 10:00 AM till 9:00 or 10:00 PM. It's people who's working in the store, me, and probably my sister working with me, like to help me work in the store. And I don't know what to say. I hope you give me a special use permit. Thank you.
Staff, comments?
Thank you, Chair. So, this property is located at 319 West 63rd. It's in one of the strip malls on 63rd. So, to the, to the north is Commercial Business District, and then B2 to the east and west, and then behind it is multifamily residential. The petitioner is requesting a special use permit to operate a 1,500 square foot tobacco and vape retail store in the B2 district. I won't go through each of the special use standards. If you have questions, you can always ask me. The applicant, or our code also dictates a special condition on top of the special standards for the, I'll read it directly, such special use may be permitted provided that no building or outdoor portion of the lot containing such use is located within 1,000 feet of a school. This does not include nurseries. So, there is a daycare nearby, but it does not qualify as a school in this case.
Question.
Go ahead.
Is there a distance for daycare? Is it, is there a one?
Not within, not within the zoning code for the specific special use.
Thank you.
And I'll elaborate on that. The applicant also has to get a tobacco license from the village, which is issued by the mayor, similar to his role as the liquor commissioner. The tobacco regulations do not allow retail sale of tobacco within 100 feet of a school, including a daycare, and a measurement was performed by the village, and this is more than 100 feet from the daycare, measuring from the door of this tenant space to the building of the daycare.
Thank you.
That's all I have currently. I'm open to questions.
Okay.
I would just point out also that tobacco and vape stores are prohibited in the downtown B1 district, and they are not allowed in, like, the manufacturing district or the office research district. So, they're only allowed in the B2 or the C1 district. And the issue when considering a special use is whether this use at this particular location, if allowed to operate, would cause any unique or adverse impacts compared to if it were located anywhere else within that zoning district. That's the, so you're really looking to see, does this use cause adverse impacts because it's located in this strip center?
Thank you. Okay. No one from the public, then let's go to the commissioners. Who's next? Correct? Commissioner Thomas?
Now, I don't, it seems to me to be a good location for, especially right in the middle of the, the property there. I don't, I don't have a problem with it. I don't have any trouble at all with it.
Okay. Commissioner Van Buren?
Is this for sales only or for consumption on premises?
What's the other?
For sales only or for consumption on premise?
Sales.
Will be, in other words, will you have a lounge for, for the smoking, or is it just for them to purchase?
Just, just to purchase.
Just to purchase?
Yes.
Yeah, the Illinois, I think it's the Clean Indoor Act, only allows indoor smoking when it's a standalone building. And when it's part of, let's say, a strip center like this is, they're not allowed to smoke on site.
Thank you. I have no other problems or questions.
Okay. Commissioner Berry?
Thank you. I vary a little bit. You know, due to the fact, there's an ice cream store in that, in that strip mall, and a daycare in Westmont Yard, I feel like something like this is detrimental to that area, and I don't support it today. And those are my reasons.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yeah, I have a question. Is this one of the sites, this is for either the village attorney or staff, is this qualify for being a cannabis facility, even though they're not asking for it? Does it qualify for it, according to the, the map that we put together to say that, hey, you can have it here, 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 here? I don't remember what that criteria was.
Staff hasn't looked into it directly, just because the request...
Is not here, right?
Exactly.
So, this is not part of the request?
Correct, yeah.
It has nothing to do with?
Nothing to do with it. I get it. But I'm just saying that I heard that that might come about later. Is that the intent? And I just wanted to make sure that we don't have any underlying issues that would prohibit it, and if we do, he needs to know that.
I missed, was the intent to perhaps obtain approvals to sell recreational cannabis or medical cannabis in the future?
No.
No?
Strictly tobacco?
Strictly tobacco.
Yes, tobacco, vape, and the accessories, and the hookah.
Okay. I have no further questions then. All right. Commissioner Peterson?
I don't think I have any questions.
Thank you. I would have, if you could show my ignorance here, could you educate us a bit on CBD products? I know some people, my friends tell me, they get CBD for their dogs when their dogs are nervous and...
CBD is, I never, I never use it or still sell it. It's just like, it's, CBD like gummies, and there is a vape. They can like, people buy it, it's like if they take their gummies, like it's help, help them to relax, or if they have bin. I never like, I don't know how it's, I never take it or try it.
I'll try to explain it.
Thank you.
It's derived from the same plant that produces cannabis, but it doesn't have any THC or any of the psychoactive properties of cannabis. So, it's legally sold, it's sold in gas stations, it's sold at pet supply stores, as he pointed out, it's sold in a variety of places legally without any special permissions needed.
Okay. Apologize for my ignorance there. You know Ashisha, yes?
Ashisha, it's a hookah.
Yeah. I lived in Saudi Arabia for 10 years.
Yeah.
Late at night, the men would gather in, in open air and smoke along, along those hookah pipes, and the Ashisha mixture was very sweet smelling, and I'll always remember that. Well, I have no further questions either. I guess you've addressed signage issues. Windows would not have bright lights?
Correct, yes. We'll discuss if approved, the signage requirements, once that's...
Yeah.
Comes to permitting.
And then would you have any objection to the ordinance, if this is recommended and gets to the village board level, when they're considering an ordinance that limits the hours of operation to those that you set, meaning not later than 10 o'clock PM, or at the latest, we can say 11 o'clock PM if you wanted to go that late?
Oh, no, it's going to be, it's not going to be late until 10:00 PM.
10 would be the limit?
10, yeah, 10 is the limit. 9 or 10:00 PM.
Got it.
All right. Well, then, under PZC 007-2023, regarding special use permit request for this tobacco and vape retail store on 63rd Street, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve as presented, Berry.
Second, Peterson.
Second, Peterson. Discussion?
Yes, we have a discussion. Go.
Chair, I, I'm thinking of Commissioner Berry's comments about the surrounding area, and how that could affect this, this establishment could affect, have a negative effect on neighboring properties. But then again, they had their opportunity to come and object, which they did not. So, I just, I know none of the other commissioners made a comment related to this particular establishment being in that particular place, other than Commissioner Berry, and I wanted to open it up to see if anybody had any thoughts to that effect.
If there were consumption on premises, I might be concerned. They're coming in and buying and leaving, and so I can't see where it would be an interrupt in any way or...
I would also point out that because the applicant has to get a tobacco license from the village, the village does do periodic compliance checks for underage sales, using an undercover officer, for all tobacco, licensed tobacco establishments. So, to the extent there are sales to minors, we presumably be able to sniff that out.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Berry?
No.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. And, let's see, did I get everybody? I think so. And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. So, there you have it, sir, our approval, and we have our recommendation to the village board of trustees, that they approve your, your request. Staff will contact you when, when you be scheduled to appear before the board.
Thank you so much. Good luck. Next agenda item is PZC 009-2023, a request from CDZA Incorporated, also known as Mrs. T's Pizza and Pub, and 2 West Naperville Road, LLC, regarding the property located at 2 West Naperville Road in Westmont, for the following, an amended site and landscaping plan approval for a restaurant in the B1 Limited Business District. Good evening.
Hello, I'm Larry with Mrs. T's Pizza, and I'm here to request an amendment to the landscaping, the site plan on the north side of the building.
Yes, and your last name was?
Oh, Buchanan, B-U-C-A, yes.
Buchanan, thank you.
To, to increase the size of the fence and install some landscaping to soften the view of the mechanical equipment on the north side of the building.
There are also some changes to the building elevation as far as materials, colors, et cetera, or the roof line, anything like that?
There has been. There has been.
Maybe you can describe those for the committee?
But I'm not sure which ones. Should we go through them one at a time? I have a list, I guess.
I think you should, sir.
Okay. There's two windows that were deleted in the lower elevation that were on the backside of a walk-in cooler. So, those seemed unnecessary.
At which side of the buildings?
That was on the west side of the building.
On the west side, thank you.
There was a sliding glass door on the west side of the building that was removed to install the new main entrance, leaving the particular room with no window. So, a window was added to, for the apartment to have some light.
And where, where was that window?
On the west side.
On the west side as well?
West side. There was a window deleted in the west, south corner. It just didn't fit. The one was left there, but the second one would not fit. There's a stone facade that is above the main entrance that on paper looks good, but in reality, it didn't work. Anything else?
All right. I think, you know, the biggest issue, I believe, before the commission tonight is going to be the north side of the building.
That's what I thought, yes.
Okay. Staff?
Yeah. So, 2 West Naperville Road, we've, they've come before you before. They had an approved site and landscaping plan in January of 2022, under ordinance 2201. Since that time, the project has, has been under construction, as he noted. Some field changes have been occurred that include the roof material and color elevation details to the colors, windows, and stone veneer, and then increased mechanical, mechanical equipment on the north side of the building. The petitioner is requesting to amend the site plan approval to promote the, the construction changes, and propose both the fence and additional landscaping to the north. The amended site and landscaping plan includes... The amended site landscaping plan includes revisions to the red metal standard seam roof, which has been changed to the black asphalt shingles. Stone veneer around the entry door was proposed above the roof line of the porch, but now terminates under the porch roof. General color palette changes to the building. Some windows on the second floor have been removed or added. The mechanical equipment and utilities on the north side of the building have been, were underrepresented, represented, and some become a visual nuisance that should be hidden. A seven-foot shadow box fence is proposed on the north side to run the length of the elevation, to hide a lot of the mechanical equipment, and softening of the fence landscaping is being proposed to buffer that view. I will note, this is sort of a gateway to the downtown, is the first building on the B1, in the B1 district, so to clean it up to make it look a little bit nicer was the request of staff. And I can answer any questions you guys may have.
Were the changes that were made as they went along done without any concurrence of the staff, or were they discussed as they went along?
So I wasn't the one directly talking with the petitioner. I believe that the changes were made, staff reached out, and they've worked with us very well to make these changes possible, and they come back in for amended approval.
Okay. Okay, is there anyone from the public who would care to comment? Seeing none, we'll go to the commissioners. Commissioner Barry, would you start?
Thank you. Another neighbor of mine up here today, very excited for you guys to get going. The building looks great, you know, I think a lot of people agreed with staff on what was going on there with the mechanicals. I know they look great now with all new, but I think it'll be a nice improvement there. But really excited to get to meet you guys, and I'll be able to eat at Neat two days a week and then bounce right over to you guys, so it'll be perfect. So everything looks good, and hopefully, you know, it's going smoothly for you guys. Thank you.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes, I remember your case very well, and you've done a nice job with the building so far, but I have to tell you that when you first came in front of us, I objected pretty strongly to the north elevation. I objected to the site lighting, I don't know if that was, was that part of the improvement plan? Because we really have no parking lot lighting there either.
I believe there was, at permitting, they've had a photometric plan. I don't recall exactly. I don't believe any changes to that have been made.
A light was installed.
Lighting has been addressed, we have...
Okay, so lighting's been addressed, and I guess the key point of your proposal is the screening of the north side, but I see no detail of the fence.
We haven't.
Yeah, it should be in, I'll look up the page. First two pages were the initial approval, and then I think it is on A5.
A5 north elevation?
Yeah.
A5, yes, but what I'm saying is, is that a rough-sawn seater fence that's unfinished? Is that, I mean, I have no detail of, other than it's a wood fence.
Actually, I think it's PVC requested by the village.
Yes.
And I think shadow box was...
Shadow box and PVC, I believe.
What does that look like?
I mean, that's what's being represented here. Yeah, so on that A5 page, that's what they're representing it to look like.
And the village requested that you do PVC?
Yes.
And that's seven feet high?
Correct. That PVC will be in a dark color like that, like shown here in the picture?
No, probably light. I think we're going with white.
I would think so.
On the site plan, it shows a wraparound to the corner of the building. Is that gonna be the case?
Wraparound with the fence?
Yes.
Yes.
Because it doesn't show on the other elevation that you showed.
The elevation that doesn't show.
On the landscaping plan, it shows it, the skirt O, two of two.
Yeah, I'm just saying on the elevation...
Oh.
Okay, I get it now. Okay, so the fence is gonna wrap around, is there anything you could do that, because I know that that, I'm gonna call it that HVAC ductwork that goes all the way up with the vent, stainless steel vent stack on the top, is that whole thing stainless steel, or is that metal that's gonna rust and look terrible?
The stainless steel is 100% for the exhaust of the kitchen hood, and then the HVAC is galvanized.
So that will rust, right?
I don't know.
Okay.
Galvanized shouldn't, and not soon. At the point it becomes unsightly, we have no problem taking care of it, painting it or doing whatever, but I just, I think painting it right now might be jumping a little too soon.
Okay. One of the other objections I had back when you first came was the retaining wall. The retaining wall that's there is...
Is horrible.
Is horrible, it's falling down, it should have been included, what do you, what do you plan on doing there?
We would like to address it, but because we're here before you now, we didn't want to make any more changes and stop the project, but we do, we know it has to be cleaned up. We want to clean it up, but I don't have, I don't have a plan for it today.
It's not part of the project, it's not part of the request.
Yeah, I'm sorry, one minute.
It's not part of the request.
I get it, I get it, it's just that it's falling down, it's falling over on the sidewalk.
I agree.
There's also that existing sign that's there too, is that gonna go away?
Again, that was something that we, when we realized we had made changes without requests, we kind of, were afraid to touch anything. So the retaining wall's not part of the project, that sign is not part of the project, it needs to, something needs to happen to it, I agree.
Okay, I have no further questions.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Peterson?
They fixed some of those bricks the other day, though. They like restacked them, it doesn't look great, but it, yeah, but it looks a lot better than it with them falling down, so it does look a lot nicer, and I think they just did that a couple, last week. There's also on the corner, I don't know if, I haven't been by there today, but there was a post with the old Golden Basket sign, and what's going on with that?
Yeah, that's what you're talking about.
Oh.
And because it doesn't show anything in the drawing what we're to do with that, we don't want to just remove it and be before you again going, why'd you remove a sign?
Well, the, and the sign code actually requires the removal of signs that advertise for a business that's no longer on the property.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So you can confirm that with staff?
The, I believe it's a panel sign.
Yeah, there's nothing, no advertisement.
So they are, I believe, able to switch it out for non-conforming signs, but they can't remove and replace it.
Oh, because it looks like that was falling apart too.
It is, it needs, we're not done.
So they're gonna...
They haven't submitted for any signage yet, so that would be discussed during permitting.
Oh, okay.
So once they get, once they get to this point after, they'll submit for signage. That wasn't part of their initial approval, though.
Okay. Why did you change the roof? The roof was so pretty, the red one.
I can answer that. My name's George Gazanzes, I've been related to Westmont for over 25, 30 years. I had a business in downtown Westmont, it's still open, I own the property, Mrs. T's, and I'm fortunate enough to do this with Larry and Candy, and the siding came in last due to a lot of cost overruns and possibly, what I was told, a long waiting time for the seams. For the metal roofing, we chose to go something, we thought we stayed within the characteristics of downtown Westmont and use an architectural shingle, the black shingles. I thought, we thought it looked nice, that was the reason, I didn't want to delay this or have to spend any more money than we've already done, way and above we ever anticipated because of the delays in the beginning.
I mean, it looks really nice now, but I just really like...
That red.
I like those kind of roofs, you know, and that's my side of town over there, so I don't buy it all the time. I am looking forward to the restaurant opening, because pizza's like my favorite food on earth, so, and I must admit, the building looks a lot better than it basically has Do you have any estimate on when you're gonna plan on opening?
We're waiting on power, we're waiting on very specific, the inside parts for a panel. It was ordered in April, and we still have not received them, so we're running on temporary power, we're running, we can't open until we get that completed, and we get no answers. I'd like to say tomorrow, but when you order in April and you still don't have the part, I mean, it's...
It's from, from a manufacturer?
Yeah, from a manufacturer, so yeah, it's not a comment issue.
Oh, okay. Okay, I look forward to your opening, whenever that is.
We're looking forward to it, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Welcome to the world of owning a business. It looks, as it's been mentioned before, this is, it's located at the beginning of the downtown district, so it's welcome to Westmont, you know, as part of that, and it's a lot better than what it was, and I think it looks great.
Thank you.
And your proposal to screen off and that is appreciated also. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Van Buren?
Yeah, feel for you, having to deal with construction at a time like this, when everything is backordered, it's really, it really is, and overruns, every, it's happening all over, and it's really discouraging, so hang in there, place looks really great.
Thank you.
And I hope that you can get it up and running soon.
Thank you, and I join the rest in my support, you know, this north side of the building.
We've gone all along.
I guess staff is satisfied with the seven-foot wraparound that's gonna come east-west, and then connect to the building on both the east and west sides, with a gate on the west access, and you happy with that, you know, the depiction here, I'm satisfied with if that's the way it is, so, so I say good luck, and we look forward to your opening. Any further discussion?
Well, I had a question, are you gonna, your existing business is in Donner's Grove, is that gonna stay open, or...
No, it's closing and we're moving.
Okay, has it been open this whole time?
Yes, it has.
Okay. I was just curious.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I confess, I want to get a slide.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, chair would support a motion to approve a request from CDZA, Mrs. T's Pizza, PZ 009 2023, amended site and landscaping plan approval for a restaurant in the B1 limited business district. Do I have a motion?
So move, Van Buren.
Second, Barry.
Motion to approve in a second. Discussion, seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. There you have it, gentlemen, again, staff will contact.
I believe you are on the agenda for the next board meeting.
Tomorrow.
6:00 PM.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right. Good luck, look forward to your opening.
Thank you.
Next item, PCC 008 2023, a request from the village of Westmont for the following, text amendments to Article 12, non-conforming structures and uses of the zoning ordinance. Who's presenting on this?
I am.
Excellent.
I'm actually the one who, in working with the community development department, and specifically with code enforcement, suggested these amendments. This commission doesn't usually, not usually called upon to address Article 12, dealing with legal non-conforming structures and uses, that's more something that's an interpretation issue for the community development department, or a code enforcement issue if a use is established that is illegal. And while the provisions were, the structure of the provisions of Article 12 were fine, the language wasn't as flushed out as it could have been, or as clear and concise as it could have been, some items were left open for interpretation, and it was felt that cleaning up this language would benefit in the interpretation and enforcement of this section. So digging into it, I can first state what a legal non-conforming structure or use is, that's something that was, a structure or use that was legal when it was first established, but due to amendments to the zoning ordinance over time, it has become non-conforming. That's considered a legal non-conforming structure, or a legal non-conforming use, and those can continue, even if there's a change of ownership, et cetera, as long as the structure, you know, more or less remains the same, or as long as the use is identical, it can continue, with some exceptions that I'll get into. If a use or, if a use is established that doesn't comply with the zoning ordinance, meaning it never complied, it's illegal, and it can't be allowed to continue, and code enforcement will look to shut it down. Same with the structure, if someone builds a structure that, for example, encroaches into a setback despite plans that state otherwise, the village can stop construction and force them to conform because they're illegal. So the amendments in Section 12.01 kind of state what the purpose of this article is, defines what a legal non-conforming structure or use is, is clear that illegal structures or uses must be discontinued immediately, and states that the burden is on the property owner to establish that a structure or use was legal when it was first built or put into use. So that's something that, the burden on the property owner was something that was not in the original language, and this kind of just clarifies that, hey, if you say that this use goes back to 1950 and has continued unchanged during all that time, prove it to us, and we'll allow it to continue, and this ordinance lists some examples of ways they can prove that the use was legal. And if there's a change of ownership or tenancy, but the use otherwise remains the same, that use can continue if it's a legal non-conforming use. Going on to Section 12.02, that addresses legal non-conforming structures, so that would be buildings or other similar structures. The essential provisions remain, it's just been reworded and tweaked a bit, an owner can make normal repairs, improvements, and even enlargements to a non-conforming structure or building. As to enlargements that can be made, as long as those enlargements don't increase the existing non-conformity and comply with all other zoning provisions, a structure can be enlarged. So let's say there's a front yard setback encroachment, they can expand the building to the rear, for example, or to the side, as long as they are within those setbacks. Where a non-conforming structure is damaged by less than 50%, it can be rebuilt using its current footprint, and there are some requirements, some timing requirements have been put in place for them to, one, obtain a building permit, and to commence construction. If the damage is 50% or more to a legal non-conforming structure, it can't be rebuilt as a non-conforming structure, it can only be rebuilt in that case with a conforming structure. And that's pretty similar to the existing provisions, again, it's more the language was cleaned up. Section 12.03 addresses non-conforming uses, and this section was completely rewritten mostly to clean up what exists. I think staff knew what the intent of the existing language was, but someone reading it in the public may have been confused as to what it exactly meant in some cases, so again, it's proposed to be cleaned up. I would point out, and this was in the staff report, that in making these amendments, I looked at ordinances from numerous surrounding communities, found that most of those communities that I know regularly update their zoning ordinances, or have completely rewritten their zoning ordinances, they're non-conforming. their zoning ordinances, their non-conforming structure and use provisions were generally consistent amongst these various communities, so I tried to mirror those provisions where possible. A non-conforming use, again, can continue as long as it's the exact same use, and this clarifies that if there's a change of use, even if it's a minor change, that use cannot, that change in use cannot continue. So, some examples are listed, and Illinois case law has provided, there's court decisions that, that are on point with this, that if there's a non-conforming doctor's office, for example, and they want to change it to a chiropractic office, that is considered a change of use, even though it's minor. If there is outdoor storage of lumber materials, and someone wants to change it to outdoor storage of, let's say, lawn mowers or something, that is a change in use that cannot continue. It's only the existing legal use exactly as is that can continue under this section, and any change of use, the use can only be for a conforming use in the district where it's located.
If it's already permitted?
Right, it can be for permitted use, or they can obtain a special use if the, if a special use is, if it's classified as a special use. If a legal non-conforming use is discontinued or abandoned for 180 consecutive days, then the use must cease, and that's regardless of whether the owner had an intent to abandon that use or not. So, if he says, well, I'm trying to sell my business, and I stopped operating the business, and it's been 180 days, this ordinance says, that's it, only a permitted use can go into that property. A non-conforming use cannot be expanded, so if a non-conforming use takes up a part of the building when it was originally established, they can't expand it to the rest of the building. It, same with the use of land, if only a portion of the land was used for a legal non-conforming use, they can't expand it throughout the entirety of the property. And then, there are similar language about if the structure is damaged or destroyed that houses a legal non-conforming use, if it's less than 50%, they can make repairs to the structure, and that use can continue as long as they meet the timing requirements, such as getting a permit in time and starting construction in time. If it's, if the damage is 50% or more, the non-con, the legal non-conforming use must cease, and only a permitted use can go in, to the property. And then, section, lastly, Section 12.04 addresses some of the non-conforming use or structure regulations found in some other sections of the zoning ordinance, and, and it cites some examples, so, for example, Section 4.18 addresses cell towers and cell, cellular antennas, that was a somewhat recent amendment, and there, there's a 12-month, 365-day provision for discontinuation of the use, where if it's, if it's discontinued for 365 days, and it's non-conforming, a new cell tower or a new cell antenna cannot be placed there. Section 6.01 addresses firearm sales as a home occupation, it says firearm sales are not allowed as a home occupation, but if something is existing, it can continue unless there is a change of ownership or change of occupancy, and then it must, must cease. That's a little different than the regulations you're considering tonight.
When, when we dealt with that issue before, if that individual had that right in his or her home, and moved to a different home, that right went with them, they, they could, no?
No. A non-conforming use is property-specific.
It's property, okay, thank you.
And there's language in this Article 12 about, for example, moving a, a structure, a non-conforming structure, you can move a non-conforming structure to another property, but it has to be conforming when moved to the new property, and a non-conforming use cannot be moved to another property. Section 6.04 in footnote 12 addresses residential dwellings with non-conforming front yard setbacks, and that says, if, if the building encroaches into the front yard setback, not only can you expand to the rear or the side within the required setbacks, but you can also expand vertically, you just can't increase the front yard setback encroachment, and that's a little different than what Article 12 says, which says you can't enlarge an existing non-conformity by, for example, building vertically. So, this Section 6.04, footnote 10 for residential houses, is going to control and supersede this Article 12 language that we're talking about. Section 7.03 is the business district section, and some specific rules were crafted for video gaming cafes and video gaming in the B1 district, allowing for continuation of those uses, you consider those within the last several months, and to the extent those provisions conflict with these Article 12 provisions, those provisions in Section 7.03 are going to control. And then, lastly, 11.06 deals with non-conforming signs, and has a different time period for elimination of signs when they're no longer being used, so that section's going to control over this Article 12.
Hey, could you, what did you say about the signs?
So, if a non-conforming sign is discontinued for a period of 365 days, it has to be eliminated.
Okay.
And Article 12 contains, for non-conforming structures, et cetera, contains 180-day period of non-use, and I didn't want to go back and change all of those somewhat unique, specific regulations found in other sections of the zoning ordinance, so I just kind of cross-referenced them and said those other provisions would control if there's a conflict.
Thank you.
That's it from my end, and happy to try and answer any questions you can have, you may have.
Hey, I, I have one, let's go to the staff. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Staff has no comments.
No comments, okay.
During my job, so.
I see no one, Larry, comments? No one else in the public, so we'll go to the commissioners, and-
I was gonna ask, if, if our house is, we put a new setback in from 25 to 35 feet, and if someone wants to, say, a 25, non-conforming now, and he wants to put on addition, can he run it with the same line as that 25-foot setback, according to what you said there?
I know they can build vertically, and I believe they can build horizontally, as long as they're within the existing front yard setback.
That's like what's happening with the, with the need, that, that-
But, but that only applies to residential houses, because that's where the, to your point, the setback, front yard setback was changed.
So, wouldn't require a, a zoning variance?
Correct.
Is that a change? Is that a change from the way it's always been? Okay, since you started, you have anything else? All right. Carol?
I think just for my own education, so, if something's non-conforming now, and you were to do an addition, if it's legal non-conforming, and say you, you wanted an addition, that existing part, does it stay legal non-conforming, or do you have to bring everything up to, to conforming?
No, if you're talking about a legal non-conforming structure that, let's say, encroaches into the front yard setback and the side yard setback, and you want to do a bump out to the rear, you can leave the front portion of the building as is, and expand to the rear, as long as you comply with the other bulk requirements of the zoning ordinance, no problem. If you're talking about things like, do I have to upgrade electrical and plumbing and things like that, that is not governed by the zoning ordinance, that's governed by the building codes, and you can reach out to the building commissioner to answer that question.
So, in other words, the, the illegal non-conforming is all zoning, it's not illegal non-conforming because it's too tall, or, you know, say a building's too tall, and it's not ADA compliant and so forth, and they want to do an addition off the back, they have to bring, I would assume they'd have to bring that front part up to ADA and everything else with it?
Well, when you mentioned too tall, that's a zoning bulk regulation, so if it was legal when it was built, and it, it exceeds the height limitation, that can remain as is, and they can even expand off the rear, as long as they're not expanding off the rear to that same height, so increasing, or increasing that height violation. So, if it's built to 45 feet, and 35 feet's the maximum height, they could expand to the rear at 35 feet. Any, my understanding is, any new expansion would have to comply with ADA and all the other codes of the village, what I don't know is if they look at the entirety of the structure for things like ADA compliance, plumbing, electrical, et cetera, and in that regard, talk to the building commissioner.
And then, lastly, I, if, if a building was damaged to fire, I know we've had that situation here, over 50%, I guess the, the resident, or, they would always have the right to come ask for that, that special use, again, right?
A variance.
A variance for that.
Absolutely. And, you know, they'd be able to establish presumably some sort of hardship that if it was an accidental fire, and that it's not feasible to construct a conforming structure based on the configuration of the lot, et cetera, then you could consider granting that variance.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Chris?
I, I think a lot like, you know, while I was thinking of developing scenarios where, you know, the what-ifs, if this happened, or this happened, you know, would it, would it work? And my question comes that we have a lot of these non-conforming outdoor storage, or whatever, that, that may become commodity of the site, like, for example, on the tracks, let's say Ace Hardware, for example, we have outdoor storage that might be something that Ace Hardware no longer wants to continue the use of that site, and it gets changed over to a different ownership, let's say another hardware store comes, and, but it takes longer than 180 days to do. And what you're saying is the non-conforming has to be eliminated. Is that something that they, the new tenant or a new owner could come back and ask for, since it was already there?
And again, it depends on the circumstance, so if Ace Hardware just shuts down its operations, puts the property up for sale, and a new user doesn't-
True value comes in.
Right, true value, hardware comes in, but it's after 180 days of non-use has occurred?
Yes.
Then they would have to only, they would not be allowed to have outdoor storage without applying for-
They could come, right?
They could come before you, I, I believe that, you know, the question would be, is outdoor storage allowed in that zoning district as a special use?
What we are saying is, it had to be, in your language, I, I took it as being that, that non-conformance has to be eliminated.
And, and only a permitted use is allowed, and permitted use would be-
Unless you come to the board, right?
Permitted use would be a permitted or a special use in that zoning district.
Okay.
And, so let's say, I'm trying to think of an example of it, but, but some use that isn't allowed in the zoning district, and it's discontinued, and the same type of business wants to come and operate it after 180 days, I guess they can ask for a variance to extend that 180-day period of non-use, and explain the circumstances, why, and you can consider it.
Thank you. You make a pretty awesome applicant, thank you for your presentation. You didn't even become elevated.
Jill?
I'm just gonna take John's word for it, that it's all fine.
Craig? I have no questions. Okay, I, I have two, back to, I think some years ago, we dealt with, with this, right, on people selling firearms out of their home, and that if that person sold that, sold the house, the person who moved in didn't have the right to continue, or they did at the time, and that's what we're cleaning up here?
Uh, no.
Or this is no change from the way it has been?
This was, this was cleaned up in the last year, that Section 6.01 that regulates home occupations, and we clarified that firearm sales are specifically not allowed, but if they pre-exist that text amendment, they can continue unless there's a change of ownership.
Uh-huh.
And the new owner cannot continue firearm sales, or the new occupant cannot continue firearm sales in that house.
I'm clear on that. And, in, in the old 12.02, it makes reference to a building review committee, now, the new reg, I guess, nothing about that, who, when you say we, we the village, is it the building commissioner who's, who's making all these judgments?
It's, it's the community development director, so you'll see anywhere there was a reference to this building review committee, which doesn't exist, it was stricken and replaced with community development director.
Got it. Further discussion, your last chance. Okay, Chair would entertain a motion to approve PZC 0082023, a request from the village of Westmont for a text amendment to Article 12, non-conforming structures and uses of the zoning ordinance.
Motion. Peterson?
I'll second the vote.
Second the board. Further discussion, seeing none, roll call.
Commissioner Barry?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yep.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, Commissioner LaVoy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. Okay, so are you gonna be appearing before the village board and requesting their approval on this?
I, I would be, whenever Scott has a question, I'll contact you. Yeah, please contact me.
Okay, does anybody have anything prior to adjournment? Yes, Craig. Thank you, staff.
Yeah, thank you. Great audience.
Doc, good job.
Thank you.
Good job. Jill? Did you have something?
No, I was, I was saying-
You were anticipating.
Close the meeting.
All right, motion to adjourn. So moved, Jill?
And second?
All in favor, raise their left hand. Okay, good.
Following.
It is adjourned.
Technicality.